I hereby declare the special budget meeting of the Concha Hakan Borough Council open and ready to conduct the business before it. Ms. Checo?
Thank you very much, President Leonard. This evening, we will be presenting the 2023 proposed budget. My name is Stephanie Checo. I am the Borough Manager. The presentation this evening will focus on the overall budget process through just kind of overview of the steps we take to get to this point. We will review a list of 2022 department accomplishments and then dive into the 2023 proposed budget. So, an explanation of revenue sources, the 2023 budget highlights, and then 2023 department goals, and then review next steps in the whole budget process as we move into the end of the fiscal year and the start of 2023. The timeline, so we start, from administrative perspective, we start our budget process in July annually. We spend that time generating capital budget initiatives and requests and solidifying council goals for the next fiscal year. Over the course of August to September, we have departmental meetings to review those expenses and then also generate the operational budget requests. And then we hold a special council budget meeting at the end of every September. That's a all-in lengthy meeting where we go through all of the capital requests and initiatives for the next fiscal year and review major cost centers and specific line items that need to be highlighted and brought to the elected officials' attention and our residents' attention. In October, we spend that, we take all the feedback that we've received at that workshop and we incorporate that into a review of the budget that we're going to formally submit to council for consideration over the month of October. And then this evening, again, we're here, I am here, to present the proposed budget that will then go on your agenda on the 16th for you to consider to advertise. If that motion is made, then the budget, proposed budget, the tax levy ordinance which encompasses the millage which funds the budget will then be advertised to the public and it will be back on your agenda for consideration to adopt on December 21st. So, it's a very efficient process. It's a very involved process. And we're here tonight and going to present it to you so that we're moving through that process and we're ready to go for 2023. So, before I move into an overview of the 2023 proposed budget, it's important to reflect on the accomplishments from 2022, basically because they highlight the many services that the community receives as a result of their tax dollars. It also exemplifies that the borough works hard on a regular basis to provide quality services to its constituents. So, I promise I will move fast through each department, but every department is a vital service to the community, so I am going to hit each one. So, we'll start with the Police Department. So, they installed a new server and complementing hardware and software to enhance the department's cybersecurity and record retention. They prepared for updated Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission requirements, and all the members of our Police Department successfully completed those required sections. Four officers completed FAA certified drone pilot training for the borough's drone unit. Each member completed an autism and law enforcement training to promote better understanding of the challenges with autism and policing. Three officers completed emergency management training. They hosted a bicycle giveaway and bike safety training at Concha Hakan Elementary, and they continued community outreach programs like Shop with a Cop, Toys for Tots Collection, the Thanksgiving Dinner Giveaway, and the Community Shout event. And there's just so much to show, so just a compilation of kind of some of the highlights from this year in terms of the service that our Police Department provides to our community. And these are some of the positive things that you see and their influence on the community. We all know on a regular basis that there's a lot of, I think Chief Metz said it best at his last presentation, the yucky that they do on a regular basis that we all really don't want to know about, but they are responsible for doing and they do rather well, all on our behalf. For the Fire Department, they completed water rescue training, they continued high-water rescue vehicle training, high-water rescue training, and elevator rescue training. So, again, this emphasis on being a preparedness for emergency situations. They hosted a community and fire prevention event, including sprinkler nights, smoke detector giveaways, and our annual Colonial Fire Prevention Event, which was very successful this year on Fayette Street. And from a Fire Department perspective, just the number of volunteers, the grants received, and all of their accomplishments over the year, the pictures are up there. They really don't do justice for how lucky we are to have their services and their willingness to volunteer to keep us all safe. They equipped part-time firefighters with EMT paramedic experience, utilized three rescue boats for multiple emergencies in the borough. They developed standard operating procedures and continued the implementation of the QRS program in conjunction with Narber Ambulance. Emergency Management, so again, emphasis on training, update of our Blazemark system, utilization and expansion of Code Red. You heard a lot of this information at our Public Service Initiative presentation that was given a month ago. They completed construction of the borough's Emergency Operations Center, which is the state-of-the-art facility. They purchased and installed flood signage in flood-prone areas, created an emergency preparedness guide for residents, added security cameras in borough parks and the administrative building, added off-site parking that's available to the borough in the event of emergencies in conjunction with Connaughtelli, so really branching out and creating those community partnerships that are vital to our success in the future. They installed floodgates on Caldwell Lane and certified three employees as CPR, AED, and first aid instructors. Our Department of Public Services, so Public Services is made up of Fire, LNI, Emergency Management, and Public Works. So, we've talked about Emergency Management and Fire already, so now we're going to move into Public Works, which is made up of four divisions. We have a Buildings Division, a Sanitation and Recycling Division, a Streets Division, and a Parks Division. So, from a Buildings Division, we continue to evaluate Borough Hall for future capital needs. We built an Emergency Operations Center, rebuilt the Public Works Garage and breakroom after Storm Ida. And one of the accomplishments you'll see from an administrative perspective is that we went through the lengthy and arduous process, and by "we" I mean Angela Metz, to receive the funding from FEMA to pay for that. So, again, not coming out of taxpayer dollars, going through FEMA and utilizing that resource to get that for administration and the community. The Sanitation and Recycling Division implemented a new trash and recycling collection schedule and addressed all new CDL driving regulations. The Streets Division continued developing an infrastructure replacement program for borough roadways. One of the most important initiatives that we've worked on this year is that we've started to transition our Public Services team members into street and repair maintenance, and you're going to see that expand in the next couple of years. We've been able to take a lot of what was consultants and contractors and bring some of those services in-house, thanks to the strategic planning of our elected officials. We now have some of the tools that we needed and able to do that. So, we have a lot of skilled employees, and I think that we're at a point now that we're very proud that we're utilizing those skills really for the benefit of the overall borough. We continue to review comprehensive road repairs, including training and purchase of equipment, and we installed safety delineators at problematic intersections. I don't have any fancy pictures for Public Services, but I think if you look at the community, what they do on a daily basis kind of speaks for itself. The Parks Division, they purchased and planted trees at the B Field, Suck Cliff and Merrid Parks, again, installed cameras for property and resident safety. They planted trees at the corner of Harry Street and Spring Mill Avenue. If you haven't driven by it, take a look, it really looks nice. They continued the revitalization of the VFW Monument at East Fifth Avenue and Spring Mill. They installed Wi-Fi at the A Field and the B Field, and they upgraded the sprinkler control system at the A Field. So, a busy year in Public Services. The Licensing and Inspections, again, kind of the everyday workhorse of the administration. They enforced new trash collection schedule, they enforced the tree heights and stump removal, they implemented a new stormwater management application process, which was implemented in conjunction with the adoption of the new Borough Stormwater Management Ordinance and the revision to the SADO, and they reviewed and assisted with permitting through completion of our new development projects to ensure as little disruption as So, moving into Recreation Services, I have a lot of pictures for recreation. So, they did a lot of facility updates, they upgraded the community center front entrance doors, the men's and women's locker rooms, the gymnasium floor, they installed a divider in the multipurpose room, installed a new scoreboard in the gymnasium, they renewed all staff CPR, AED, and first aid. They offered an in-house summer camp that this year hit all weekly maximums, so we were maxed out in terms of registrations, which is just fantastic. We continued our partnership with Yoga Home for yoga in the parks, chair yoga, kids yoga, yoga for beginners. We resumed the mailing of our actual hard copy of the activity guide with the layout and content that was created in-house by the Recreation Services Department, and it was really great. So, you look at it and take a look at all of the programs that are offered to the community, it's something that we're really proud of, that we can give our community a place really to focus on quality of life. We worked with the Concha Hakan Library to offer community a storybook walk in Merrywood Park. We worked with the Community Development and Grants Coordinator to secure $250,000 DCNR grant for the rehab of the Suck Cliff Park Trail. And just up on the screen, I think this is really cool, so we talk about programs and services, but this is an example of just kids in our community coming into the community and just having some place to go. So, this facility has really evolved into, they have a structured, safe place to go in the afternoons, after school, and they utilize it, which is just great. We hosted numerous programs, services, special events, and seminars for all age groups in the Concha Hakan community. You can see the little kids, their Easter egg hunt, our movies in the parks, our tot play, and then of course, our senior luncheons, which are very popular. And we have the last two of the year coming up for our Thanksgiving and our holiday luncheon. Administrative Services, they completed all required Borough State, Borough and Federal financial audits, kind of the behind-the-scenes runt of the work that happens day in and day out for that grind. I noted earlier that they applied for and received the FEMA financial assistance for Storm Ida. They completed the Safety Committee recertification in terms of workers' compensation. They received and processed the American Rescue Plan funds, and they migrated the borough's finance software to be cloud-based. Zoning completed over 20 zoning conditional use and relief extension hearings. They continued updating the zoning billing tracking and processing procedures. They tracked and processed the enforcement of short-term rentals that were in violation of the Borough Zoning Code, and we updated the Borough Zoning Map. Community Development and Grants, again, this is, you've heard from Ms. Stettler numerous times this year, just because they have to do public hearings to submit the actual grant applications, but this is a program that is vital to our community, and Chris Stettler and Nancy Nugent, who kind of are the coordinators, they do a fantastic job. This year, they completed six rehab properties, one of which included an emergency sewer repair, so there was a lot of conjunction between the Sewer Authority and the Borough Administration, which was nice. We processed 10 applicants off the waitlist for services or potential services, and then we executed a lot of contracts, so the 2021 CDBG contract, the 2019 home contract, the 2022 CDBG funds were submitted, and then we installed eight curb ramps with federal grant dollars. And then also, not that she hadn't done enough, but we also received an over $463,000 worth of grants this year. So, again, this is what's happening behind the scenes on a regular basis to make sure that this borough, for the community, is a success. And then last but not least, our Communication and Special Events Department, so they produced two borough newsletters, and then they coordinated, planned, and organized all facets of borough-sponsored special events and annual community events in conjunction with all of our borough departments. I can't say enough for our entire borough team, who really puts in a lot of time and a lot of effort to make these community events very successful, and they've really become a pivotal aspect of the facet of Concha Hakan. So, just a few highlights. So, again, the accomplishments presented this evening are an overview, they're not all accomplishments, but there are some of our borough operations from 2022. And I'd like to just take a quick second to thank all our borough staff for their hard work and our elected officials for all of their guidance and direction. I'd also like to thank the entire borough community because it's their input and their guidance that we utilize to make all of these decisions, which then we act on. So, the diagram up there is just really showing how all three entities, Borough Council and a Mayor, Borough Administration, and our residents, businesses, and community groups work together to make Concha Hakan what I think is the premier destination to live, work, and play. So, with that being said, let's shift gears and present the proposed 2023 budget, which I know you're all excited to hear. So, to really understand the budget, the starting place that I always begin at are your revenue sources. The primary revenue sources are the real estate tax, real estate transfer tax, earned income tax, local services tax, mercantile tax, business privilege tax, and fund balance. You can see up on the screen a pie chart which breaks down these categories and really highlights where your tax dollars are coming from. So, there's 18% of your overall tax revenue from those sources is coming from real estate taxes, 43% from earned income tax, 2% from mercantile tax, 24% from business privilege tax, 2% from LST, and then 7% from fund balance. And again, this pie chart is specific to those major revenue sources. You'll see later on a full compilation of operational revenues, but for the time being, we're going to focus on real estate taxes and how this fits into the overall picture. So, 18% real estate taxes. I think it's important when you're compiling the borough's budget that we talk about real estate tax and really what that means. So, there's two components to the budget and how we do the whole budget process. We have to think about the budget process as it relates to the borough constituents and the budget process as it then relates to the approval from our elected officials. So, I'm going to take a brief second to provide an explanation and an example of how we put your tax dollars to work. So, when we talk about real estate taxes, we're talking about millage. What's millage? So, millage, the millage rate that we use to fund the operations of the borough is the amount per 1,000 used to calculate taxes on a property. One mil represents $1 in taxes per 1,000 in tax assessed value. What does that mean? I think it always helps to have an example. So, to just break it down further, if you consider that a resident's home's assessed value is $100,000, then in this example, one mil of tax would equal $100. If you look at the borough's total millage rate in 2022, it was 33.208 mils. So, in this specific example, in 2022, the homeowner owes $33 and let's say 21 cents in taxes for every 1,000 in tax assessed value. So, that equates to approximately $3,320.80 annually in property taxes. So, what makes up the total millage rate? There's four sources that make up the borough's millage rate. There's the county millage, which is 3.923, the community college millage, which is .39, the borough millage, which is 4.5, and the Colonial School District millage, which is 24.395. All of those numbers together get you your 33.208 mils, which is what a resident owes to those four sources. So, let's put it all together. If a homeowner owes $3,320.80 per the calculation that we did previously in total property taxes, you then ask, what's the amount owed to the borough, the county, the community college, and the Colonial School District? In this example, a resident of Concha Hakan would owe to the borough $450 a year. They would owe to the county $392.30 a year, to the community college $39, and to the school district $2,439.50. So, that is a breakdown of where a resident's tax dollars go to four different sources on an annual basis. And just broken down further in a pie chart, so you can see it visually, again, the blue is Montgomery County, the orange sliver there is the community college, the green portion is the borough of Concha Hakan at roughly 13.55%, and then the purple portion is to the Colonial School District at roughly 74%. So, before we switch to how millage equates to the budget, what really does this breakdown mean for a borough resident? So, if we, again, refer back to this example and understand that as a house's home's assessed value increases, that amount will increase as well, but for simplicity purposes, we're using those numbers. But in this specific example, this particular property owner would owe approximately $37.50 a month to the borough. And what services do you get for $37.50 a month? Well, you just saw a lot of those services that were highlighted in your 2022 accomplishments, but to just name a few, you get trash removal, recycling, snow plowing and snow removal, upgraded new and maintained parks, 24/7 police protection, 24/7 fire protection, emergency services, library services, code enforcement, permitting, property maintenance, park programming, road improvements, a community center, and access to numerous free special events over the course of the year. And those are just a few of the services that you get for your money. So, when we're talking about $37.50 a month for that list and the accomplishments we listed before, it's not a bad deal. Okay, so what does the value of one mil, now that we know what a mil means, what does it mean for the budget? So, the total assessed value of property moving into 2023 is estimated at $734,734. Again, your total millage is 4.5 or .45%. You do the calculation, and the total revenue that can be expected from tax, from real estate tax, is roughly $3.3 million, and then you have to account for penalties, delinquents, and discounts. So, what we estimate coming in from real estate tax to the borough in 2023 is $3,189,033. So, we take that, let's just say $3.2 million, and we break it down into different operating funds. And those are the funds that we utilize on an annual basis to provide the services to the community. We fund those specific funds, general, streetlight, debt service, fire, and library by assessing a tax levy to that fund. If you look on the screen under the tax levy portion, that is the actual ratio that will be utilized to calculate what that revenue will be. So, if we break it down further, your general fund for 2023 is going to have roughly $2,372,853 allocated for your general operating fund of real estate taxes. Your streetlight fund will have approximately $119,000. Your debt service will have roughly $550,000, fire protection will have roughly $89,000, and then your library fund will have $59,000. Those five categories equate to your total real estate taxes to be collected of the $3,189,033. So, now that we have a better understanding of tax revenue and how those tax revenue dollars are utilized, we can move into an overview of the 2023 budget. Most importantly, what we are proposing tonight is a balanced budget with revenues and expenditures equalling $15,497,578. That number from a revenue perspective includes the utilization of fund balance, and from an expenditure perspective includes transfers of roughly $1 million into reserve funds. The most important information to provide this evening, in addition to the fact that we're presenting a balanced budget, is that we also, for 2023, are not proposing a tax increase. So, everything that we are presenting this evening will continue to be funded at 4.5 So, revenues, the full revenue package from the general fund. On the screen is a pie chart that breaks them down. The specific revenue categories are real property taxes, the Local Tax Enabling Act, licenses and permits, fines and forfeits, interest rents and royalties, intergovernmental revenues, departmental services, unclassified operating revenues, and fund equity. Once you factor in taxes with all of your other revenue sources, your real estate property taxes equate to roughly 16%. The largest chunk of your revenues are clearly coming from your Local Tax Enabling Act, which includes transfer taxes, EIT, mercantile, BPT, and LST. And then moving into expenditures, again, the different categories of expenditures relate to general government at 15.17% or roughly $2.3 million, police services at 37.24% or $5.8 million roughly, fire and emergency services at 5.86% or $907,000, licensing inspections coming in at 6.22% or $964,000, public services at 22.76% at $3.5 million, culture and recreation at 5%, $789,000. Other expenditures come in at roughly 1% at $186,000. And then again, your interfund transfers to reserve funds of $1 million, which equates to about 6.45% of your total general fund operating expenditures. It's important to note that the overall increase from '22 to '23 is roughly 8.86% with the majority of the increase coming from contractual obligations, pension requirements, healthcare costs, and other costs as it relates to personnel. So, historically, over the past five years, the borough has followed the national inflation average range. When compiling the proposed budget, we've stuck pretty close to that range, if not slightly under or over, depending on the year. Obviously, that percentage is much higher based on global economic issues in 2022. Therefore, you are seeing a much higher percentage increase from fiscal year 2022 to 2023 in your proposed budget. However, the borough is still following normal operating policy as it pertains to budgetary increases, and most importantly, you are incorporating this higher percentage increase in the budget without the need for a tax increase. So, just kudos to all of you, Borough Council and our mayor, for the very strategic decision-making that has happened over the course of basically the last three years. You've positioned the borough in a capacity to fully absorb this higher percentage increase without having to financially burden the borough residents with a tax increase. So, I'll repeat again that the proposed 2023 budget does not include a tax increase. And I think that if you really stop... And I think that if you really stop and look back, like, wow, we've been through a lot over the course of the last couple of years. And we have a lot coming. We have new community members, new businesses that are coming into the borough and to have made concerted and strategic decisions to get us to this point. And for me to be able to be up here and present this budget to you, when I say kudos, I really do mean that. And then finally, we break down our major cost expenditures. So all of those operating expenditures that we just reviewed, when you break them down into major cost centers, roughly 66% of that is personnel costs, 27% of that is operating expenditures, and 6.45% of that again is interfund transfers to reserve funds. So you might ask, or anyone who may be watching this might ask, what is the justification for these proposed costs? So we lay out some budget highlights that are basically based on feedback we've received from residents over the course of the year. I think it's important to remember that we get feedback all year, but we're limited in our capacity to fund issues that may come up other than an emergency situation because we have a set budget. So we can supplementally appropriate some aspects if there is an emergency situation or there's a supply chain issue. But for the majority of what we do over the course of the year, there's a lot of tracking that goes on so that we can make sure as we move through the next budget cycle that we're incorporating some of that feedback, concerns, or wants and desires of the community. So some of the 2023 budget highlights, again, no tax increase, a continued investment into the reserve funds and the OPEB trust. And that's important because what you're doing by completing that on a fiscal year is that you're really setting up the borough for financial viability for the long term. You're presenting a balanced budget with a decreased reliance on fund balance. You have a continued investment into public safety. You're introducing a new full-time firefighter, continuing to fund the fire stipend program for your volunteer firefighters, purchasing uniforms and necessary equipment, police services, we're following the depreciation schedule with vehicles, IT upgrades and protection, you've increased your appropriation to Narberth Ambulance, they're a vital component of our emergency services team. And then from emergency management, equipment, vehicle contingencies, again, for those what-if situations that we have learned, we don't know they're coming and they may be out of our control, but we need to be ready to act. Continued investment into public services with updated equipment and expanded in-house services, a continued investment into recreation services with a focus on quality of life. So an effort to rebuild the Aubrey Collins Basketball Courts and continue some facility upgrades at the community center. We've allocated matching funds for grants in both capital engineering and traffic engineering and parks and recreation. And then really what's important is for us to increase this budget. One of the biggest highlights is that you have increased personnel dollars that are allocated in your operating expenditures, and that's really to meet the needs of that estimated roughly 35% population increase over the course of the next 18 to 24 months with the intentional purpose of still providing the same level of quality service that our constituents have come to expect. So those are some budget highlights. And then we also set goals and we kind of follow the SMART method of setting goals that are specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound. And I know you're probably all tired of listening to me talk, so I'm going to go through them quickly. The police department will be installing and implementing license plate reader cameras to aid in traffic safety and criminal investigations. They will be updating the officer's utility belts to the modular vest carriers to help with the reduction of on-duty related injuries, introducing new parking enforcement systems and software to track enforcement and administrative efficiencies, continue with community outreach programs, continue planning and preparedness for events and incidents in coordination with our emergency services team. Our fire department will continue to educate and train new hires to understand our building structures, layouts, and construction types, continuing developing fire policies as applicable, and continue collaboration with all of our emergency services, again, with a focus on planning and preparedness. Our emergency management department will be installing a flood gauge, a USGS flood gauge, training, continuing offering training to all of our departments in high-water awareness, and continuing to keep our community safe and prepared. Public services, again, is made up of four different divisions. So from a building perspective, we will be making updates to the Borough Administration Building that are necessary in order to keep all our systems up to date and under warranty and really looking forward to the future. So what do our tenant spaces need? What do we need? This is kind of the heart and soul of the community, so we need to keep it a place that is welcoming and that provides the service that our community deserves. And then for the sanitation and recycling division, they have applied for a DEP 902 grant for a new recycling truck, so fingers crossed we get that grant as well. And then evaluate, as you've heard in the presentation last week, on other available options in terms of trash removal, in terms of location. Our streets division will be purchasing a blacktop cold planer, again, for in-house road repairs and maintenance, and then work in collaboration with our engineer to continue this larger focus on an infrastructure program. Parks division will continue tree plantings in conjunction with our EAC and install a new playground at the Bee Field, which we're very excited about, and install more surveillance security cameras on borough property as well. Al and I will continue to be a source, a resource to all of our contractors in the borough. They do a really good job of educating property owners and contractors on property maintenance code changes, so as they change, one of their goals for 2023 is to make sure they continue serving as that resource. And then again, continue to review and assist with permitting throughout completion of new development projects and finish the projects such as 400 West Elm, 720 Spring Mill, SEPTA, et cetera, with as little disruption as possible. Recreation is going to focus on rehabbing the multipurpose room floor, replace backboards in the gymnasium, reconstruct the Aubrey Collins Basketball Courts, continue to offer and improve on-program offerings for all age groups, youth, teens, families, seniors, across the board. It's our responsibility to make sure we are serving everyone, offer community trips, assess rental fees, and increase rentals at the Marywood Park House. And then our administrative services will continue offering clinics and trainings for our staff on safety and wellness, provide employee training in conjunction with DIVIT, and then collaborate with the borough's labor attorney on a revision of the borough's employee manual with specific emphasis on the Concha Hocken Fire Department full-time and part-time employee policies. Zoning will evaluate permit and application fees, community development and grants. So they are planning on rehabbing seven properties with federal grant dollars. Again, they will have to secure the engineering services and start the bid construction process for the Suckliff Park Walking Trail, secure the same thing for the CDBG curb ramp project, again, all federal dollars, and then prepare and submit a 2023 CDBG program application to keep the vital community program going, moving into the future. And last but not least, our Communication and Special Events. So we have a new Communication and Special Events manager, Paul Gronowski, and he really is going to spend the year assessing all of our communication needs and special event operations and provide recommendations for any areas of potential growth as he may deem applicable. So we firmly believe that the budget highlights presented along with these 2023 departmental goals, they provide justification for the operating and capital expenditures that we're proposing to spend in 2023. More importantly, we believe the budget encompasses all community feedback received over the course of the year and incorporates additions and needs that the community expressed as important initiatives to fund in the 2023 budget. So the next question is, what happens now? It's important to note that the budget is advertised on an annual basis prior to our elected officials considering adopting it because it's the community through our elected officials who approves the budget every fiscal cycle. Therefore, we really do urge our community members to utilize this period of time between November and December to provide any feedback or pose any questions so that we can ensure that the borough's annual budget accurately reflects the needs of our community. So some important dates. I've presented the budget this evening. We had our budget workshop in September. The next steps will be, on November 16th, on your agenda, your public agenda, will be consideration to authorize the budget and the tax levy ordinance. Those public notices will go out. There will be a copy, a hard copy, that's posted in the lobby of Borough Hall. It will also be posted on the borough website. There will be directions on the TV channel as well, which directs anyone, they can call the borough or they can come into the borough if they have questions as it relates to the budget. But basically, it's advertised at this point, if you approve it on the 16th. And then it will be back on your agenda on December 21st on your regularly scheduled council meeting to consider adopting the 2023 budget. So last but not least, I'd just like to conclude by stating that we, as administrators, are honored to serve the borough of Concha Hocken, not just our elected officials, but also the residents, the business owners, and our community groups. It's our belief that the borough will continue to evolve forward through this proposed 2023 budget along with collaboration from all facets of our community. We will continue to strive to enhance the quality of life for all in Concha Hocken by utilizing the resources available to us through the 2023 budget. So I will end it with just thanking you for your time and for your consideration of the 2023 proposed budget. It's an honor to work diligently every day to make Concha Hocken the place to live, work, and play. So again, thank you very much. At this point, I will take any questions from council, the mayor, or the public, if you have any. Okay, and just to make sure everybody knows, this entire presentation will be recorded and placed and available on the website should anyone need to refer back to it over the course of your deliberation period. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just on behalf of myself and council, I really would like to thank you and the administration, all the heads of all the departments, for everything you do all year to make the borough run and function the way it does. It's just an honor for us to have such good people. It truly is.
We are very lucky. We have a very, very good team.
And you lead them very well. Thank you.
I want to close the special session.
Do you have a comment? I don't have to do public comment again. Is there anyone? Right, there's no one. Is there any public comment? No? Special meeting?